City water! Water, water! I P O B, I carry our most of the family's name. Oh, my God, I don't know! If I die today... Ladies and gentlemen, please, shall we all rise? Shall we all give up the power? I P O B!
Family!
I P O B!
Family!
I P O B!
Family!
One family!
I P O B!
One family!
I P O B!
One family!
I P O B!
I will not send you off, because we were a guy that grew he was a guru when he was there, I was Supreme Leader Oh, oh, come to me, come to me, come to me, where? Oh, oh, come now! Oh, you can be a friend! Oh, oh, come now! Oh, you're hungry, yeah, yeah?
Yes!
We don't blazer Kola Not in English. Kola Not, we know, does not understand English, so we use our language. Bear with us as we speak the language that the Kola Not understands. Traditionally, as an elder, I will have my cap on my head, I will remove it as I let the Kola Not. That's the tradition. You know, we don't blazer Kola Not in English. Kola Not, we know, does not understand English, so we use our language. Bear with us as we speak the language that the Kola Not understands. Traditionally, as an elder, I will have my cap on my head, I will remove it as I let the Kola Not. That's the tradition. I will also let you know that we use the traditional Igbo language or Igbo. It is this kind of Kola Not that we use in our prayers, in Igbo. Nde wunu, nde wunu, nde wunu. Mba, Kula Not Oji Jin, Duro Jin Dawana, Nne Lu, Nye Ama Supreme Leader. Oh, Hamadike, we go back to our Maggie, what can we do for your highness? What Oji? Niko, Bata. And when Onyanya Mbarasioka, no Eba, Niko, Niko, Yapi, Weroji. Onyanya Mbarasioka, Nye Oji. That is the spirit, the spirit of civilization of Igbo. Anambara Weroji, Weroji, Onyanya Nukustet. Onyanya Nukustet, the federal capital of Yafra, Onyanya Nukustet, Nye Oji. Ofoonya Wera, Osuoli Be'ano. Weroji, Nye Professor, Osuweke, for Imo State, Nye Aha. Nye Oji Akia, no Eba, Weroji, Nye Akia. Omunye Pawa Ma, Opala, Omunye Tjoe Tjoe Desiye. Weroji, Tjoe Nye, Eko State, Eko State, Omunye Akani Kya. Weroji, Wega Professor Sadebe, Shiteltan, Onyanya Kumwana, the first premier of Igbo State. That is Sadebe, Nye Oji. Weroji, Tjokonye, Igo, Onyanya River State, Igocha, Niko, Kedonya River State, no Eba. Romeo, Nambe, Weroji, Nye Omunye, Nye Anipuzo, Wobeke, Mbekke, Shuni Bani, Buguma. Kalabarim, Wera Bata, Okrekka, Nnebe, Nye Oji, Nye Oji. Please, is anybody from Uganda in the house? Is anybody from Uganda? Is anybody from Abai Bo? Anytime me, Asoradiya, no, Asa Woman, To Time You To Nne, eh? Nne Nudua Na, Don't worry. Asoradiya, Sorsonete, anytime me. Nne, Anya Oji, Wuna Flower, Kinga. Cross River State, Cross River State, Kedonya Cross River, Wera Pe'ya? Yes. Uganda is in the house, okay, get it from, give it to him, no, 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 get it. Odi Wa'otoha, No'of Granddaughter Odi, Anya Kula One, Omo Flower. Alright, Oji, Emu N'Onyans, Emu N'Onyans, Emu N'Onyans in the house. Mba, Wetera, Nekonya Nse, Olo Mano Manali Bo, Awunse De'Tie'se, Okunishi, Nne Mo'wa Chief, Nekonya Ema, No'Manali Bo, Onyans. Onyans, Weta Oji, Oronenden Se Nne. Period. Mba, Weroji, Nyofonye, Nahandri Nye Iku Chief, Kehe Morowu, Nye Ya, Mbarasol, Nudua Ma. Oji, Olorin So, Kaga Zee, Gaya, Kawaya, Goruto N'Ogona, Let It Be Shared. Ito Ma in the house? Onne, Oyi, Nye Omunye, Oyi, Omunye Kola Neneche. Are they in the house, Koki, in the house? In Gara, in the house? In Gara, Wera Go Oji? Yes, thank you, Oja Go'era, Niko. Somebody from Delta has only taken Kola Not, Sadebe is from Delta, is anybody from Bayasa? Omunye Okilo, anybody here? Omunye Jonata, Ni Burayishi. Anu here? Thank you, Niko, Ababu Yoson, God bless you. Ladies and gentlemen. Onyanya Wa Igosunu, may God bless all of us for being here. We will continue to accord this respect for the fact that our leader is in this, in this city today, life. You all remember, during 1967 to 70, there was a popular word, Sabotura. As at last week, in Igbo Catholic Church, I witnessed saboturas. Who was telling me that our leader will not be here? Ah, Chi'ek. Saboturas, shame unto them. Saboturas, shame unto them. You are a little witness, ladies and gentlemen, at this point in time, please permit me to welcome to the microphone, our zona coordinator, Ezhiata, Ezimua. Munachim Sagha, lady, Opala, Niko, Kupunaga.
Thank you, Mazzi. IBOB. IBOB. One Family. One Family. Welcome, Umuchineke, the children of God are here. So, my name is Munachim Sagha, like he said, and I am going to be the little old place thing, right? I can't believe I'm doing this, I'm the most shyest person. So, Koki, I want freedom for my people.
Yes.
So, I want to use this occasion to... I want to first call my leader, my mother, my savior, however you, for your information, he did not tell me to call him so. But I find I did you so, my love and my leader, thank you, thank you for coming. The three leaders of indigenous peoples of Yafra, Mazzi Nandi Kanon. I do want to thank our deputy man, Sushen Bepo, as well as the head of the Red Rat of State, Mazzi Chika, he goes there. IBOB North American Red, Mazzi Obi, Obi, we go together, and our US coordinator, my wonderful Mazzi, is here. That's a two hour song, the rest tell me. And of course, all the principles are amongst all over the world, we thank you for your timeless offering to your people. We thank you for time and time, staying up all night, I know for me I'm not able to sleep, because I want freedom for my people. And of course, I cannot be here tonight without my sister, Ailus. Oh, I'm sorry, I cannot be here tonight without my sister, Ailus, in kept talking, she does, she's my one of ones, she helps me with everything. And do want to acknowledge my husband, for allowing me to serve my people, husband, I thank you. Alright, of course, the distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon to everyone, you all are welcome to this great event. Today is indeed a vanguard day in the lives of people, the people of Yafra. It is an honor to have the leader of indigenous people of Yafra, Mazzi Nandi Kanon. Oh, Hamadike Wa! Of the Yafra in our midst, a man of all our vision, who has seen our destination even when the journey took off. No wonder he's so passionate about what he's doing. His vision is so unique and clear to him, that he is confident and comfortable working with oppositions. He freely takes hard questions, from critics, and does not attack anyone, does not attack anyone who is honestly doing the right thing for the Igbo. Rather, he welcomes them with an open arm, and example in his last meeting with chairman of the Wadi Mo Congress, Officer Dioko. His love and dedication to his people of Yafra is quite infectious. This is a man that has given up everything, including his life, to see that his people are free. It's therefore not surprising that he has no equal when it comes to freedom. When it comes to the people of Yafra, when it comes to fighting for his people, people have come before him, and others are claimed to fight for Yafra freedom, also exist, but it is outrageous freedom fighting. We have seen that some of these people were never, are not sincere in getting freedom for their people. They only wanted to make a name for themselves, they often make a fortune from the misery and pain of their people. Some of them even get to the extent of calling themselves the elite, and they have the audacity to call their own people miscreants. And as a result, ashamed to identify and team up with their people. Unlike this group of persons, Mazzi Nandi is everything to everyone. He freely identifies with his people irrespective of their social class.
Yes.
He's even ready to be labeled a miscreant along with his people. You know, he was asking for a T-shirt that says "miscreant". So, he's willing to be labeled a miscreant for his people, they willingly obey his command, without being tried on Kajo. In case study, is the Anwar Thathi of May sit at home in Yafra land. It is a no fact that the Yafra people are Republicans, and very democratic in their approach to life. So, when you see them committed to a man, he must have won their hearts.
Yes, sir.
Freedom of speech include the freedom to defend, to offend people by telling the truth. Why? Because the truth will set you free, but first you will have to be pissed off, unfortunately. This is the approach Mazzi Nandi Kanon has used to wake up the people of Yafra. He made us go back to whom we are, the people of the truth, the people is Ogo Bundo, truth is life. He also made us begin to see and project into the future. He warned us about the dangers ahead, and as a result, helped to bring us together into one big IBOB family. The work of Mazzi Nandi, through the past few years, speaks for itself, for over 30 years, that is, since the Yafra genocide. In 1967 to 1970, more than 3.5 million women and children were gruesomely and mercilessly massacred. It has been very difficult to bring the Yafra people together since then. However, today, all that has, all that has changed, as we have, we are here present under one roof, representing every different part of Yafra land, working together towards the freedom of our people. This indeed is a great achievement. As a female Yafra freedom fighter, I have learned a lot. Fact of which that the reason Africa was left in that continent for over 400 years, is that women were not given the rightful place in the government and the leadership, like in other continents. Policies and decisions were made on their behalf, without allowing them to participate in the process of that decision making. How would you effectively represent those that you cannot comfortably identify with? Rwanda, a nation that suffered genocide as Yafra is today being built up at a very fast pace. Our government is committed to ensuring equal rights for women and men without prejudice, to the principle of, without prejudice, to the principle of gender equality in nation building. The 2019, 2013 Rwanda parliamentary election, Usha did an unprecedented record breaking, 40% of senior female candidates. Making Rwanda the top country for women equality. Although we are yet to be fully restored, I believe that IBOB will get more female participation if women. Because in Yafra land, women will be treated equally. So, to every Yafra freedom fighter present here today, seeing our collective future is very important. Therefore, my counsel for us is to see the project as a communal project, not a private business. It is not about me, it is not about you, it is about the people of Yafra. Therefore, there's no need for necessary competition, just recognize your brothers and sisters' gifts and allow them to work for Yafra. Every Yafra is uniquely gifted, the challenge there is recognizing and maintaining your name in use of your gift. Also, it is critical for us to boycott every Randa association. The people are attacked voice club for the purpose of this presentation, and only hang around visualizing people and dreamers, who will make your dream a reality, and also boycott those selling our rights and the future of our children for their notoriety and their political interests. How do we identify them? They are the ones that can freely speak about freedom in this zoo and they will not be arrested. That's how you know who is against your freedom. Yafra, I'm calling our children of Joko DiKav Yama, children of Gofor, in case for our brothers and sisters, especially women, to rise up and become the towards restoration a nation that will leave a heritage for our children. Finally, having said all this, I urge everyone to present to this prize that is worth fighting for. A free and fully restored Yafra nation, a super nation of all nations, flowing with milk and honey, that will make life easy for our future generation. All Hey Yafra!
Hey! In 1971, during the African World Championships, what a final match. The DFC chairman from Ethiopia scheduled Rangers International to play Column St. of Dili in April. But the team, the main chairman for Eastern Trans States Force Commission, went to the president of Eastern Trans States, Madhasi, and said, "No, Rangers cannot win this match in April. Please, let's play this match on 30th of May, 1971." Asika applied to UFC and it was approved. On the day of that soccer match in Eno Bo, I remember as if it were yesterday, Enes Tofongo made his soul rest in battlefield. Rangers three, Column Stiles, nothing. That was a correlation of Republic of Yafra, 30th of May, 1971. Despite our surrender in 1970 and vociferated return to the Nigerian family, the war has continued against us by other means. We are surrendered by smiling faces in the Nigerian family and we reciprocated with generous smiles and total trust, having indeed been founders of a united Nigeria. But, whenever and wherever we look around, we see casualties. When we go casualties, in the comprehensive sense of the word, we see trailer load of dead, modular bodies, a home environment hostile, and discouraging to economic development, all forms and determinations in workplaces and places of residence outside Igbo land, and inevitably contribute negative feeling of insecurity and the complex in Brits, our shikani, we're... Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, let me humbly welcome our brothers and sisters from Ijo Nation. Let me welcome our brothers and sisters from Anioma, DiSoko, Iroko, Isefiri. All those I believe in Yafra that are all tribal Igbo, Igbbo, Kachina, N'Onyanya, Jesus. Ladies and gentlemen, according to our program. I am going to hand over the microphone to one of our elders, first man, a leader in the IBOB, IBOB, one man, one family. IBOB. IBOB. One Family. Oh, Hamadike, all who behind in the river. Those who didn't understand what he said, said, "Oh, Hamadike, you're the reason we are here. Without of Hamadike, there's no here. Without of Hamadike, there's no Yafra. For what is happening to us, we must all raise arms and squash them. Respectfully, all our elders, from every part of this world, we recognize you. All our youth, you are going to hear the elders talk to you, because you will take over. We cannot allow the Pula Nis, that do not develop anything, to destroy us. It will never happen because we're walking and Tugabama is behind us. All of you that are here today are ordained and blessed. Our country is ours. I just want to thank you for coming, I just want to humbly thank you for coming. Makanasi, N'Ako, Ondi Che'lu, Kumurisi, Onyane, Naso, Brode, Morogu, Yabia, Ule, Mendiya, Acho, Isopolo, Olo. Makongo, Nabya, Omonye, Yabba. Onyane, N'Yagoni, Ule, Yajju, Emechi, Numechana, Ayewote, Yafra. Emechi, Numechana, Ayewote, Yafra. Onyaju, Si'na, Yaheme.
Oga, Yana, Zobra.
Oya, Cheki, Amari, Yeheme. Makanandjo, Okoha, our elders, our women are charged, like our elder, Houston, Zomu Konegu spoke. In IBOB, we work respectfully with the leadership of IBOB, Hona Nandi Kanon. Therefore, we are here to humbly thank you again. I'll come back and talk to you some other time. I'm the national coordinator of USA, the national coordinator of USA. Texas is lucky to have the Indian state. I have our brothers and sisters who are here in Houston, doing the necessary job, and I acknowledge all of them. Whether I call you name or not, we honor you, we thank you, we ask you to continue, because history, history will treat you right. History will treat you right, and Tugabama will continue to bless you for what you do. All you do need to sacrifice, we do it because of our unborn children, our future generation, our elders, and us. We sacrifice everything sanctifiable, we will, we will bring it to you. We're ready to work with those who want to work, we're not ready to work with those who just talk. Oh, Hamadike has done, oh, Hamadike has done, done, that's why we follow you. I would like to introduce our state coordinator, who is here in the house. Mazzi Chiu, okay, please, identify yourself. I wanted to make sure that anytime you need help, you see these three people, but it's not us, you see our members. We have the registry, you put your name there, and you put your number there, and you put where you reside, not your home address, anything of that nature. We just want, if you want us to talk to you, we will come and serve you, we are here to serve. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Our country. Thank you, sir. Hey! God has written today in this book of life. For those of us who are here today, we will all live to witness the proclamation of Yafra. Before we start to recognize the Yafra veterans, something significant happened in 1970, mainly after the Nigerian-Yafra war, that was not a civil war. Who remember the Democratic Party of Anapaste, under chief, Jimy Obudu, Ingenieur Roy, you mean? Do you remember that name? One of the Yafra scientists, when they deep compare, all the things that Yafra discovered during the crisis, including Ogunigwe, Rocket, this. including Obunigwe, rocket, this, that. When they combined all the whole statistics, they went to face the issue of Eno Go. Under that stupid dictator, IJ Disala, and handed over every document to him. Disala invited military police, asked them to bring a gallon of petrol, and they burned all the whole documents. She had a lot of documents, now my Jesus! If we were not among them, assembled all the scientists, he was implemented by Gowa. Today, they cannot lay hands on how Obunigwe was discovered. Today, historically, Nigeria can never say yes without winning Diarra. The first Nigerian that won gold medal in the Commonwealth, already a bit. Who was the first middleweight and lightweight middleweight champion of the world? Gawonye, the Tiger! Who was the first keeper of Nigerian grinnigos in 1945? Nigerian Boris Tim, Dan Aliam! Who was the first captain of grinnigos to run African Cup of Nations? This is Chama Chweyemeka Chuku, Diarra! Who scored the winning goal, Nigeria won 1996? Kinto Dopez, Atlanta, Karawapo, Diarra! As of today, 98% of Nigerian football team are made up of Diarra's. Ladies and gentlemen, please, wherever you are taking your seat, we are now going to thank God to recognize the living souls of the Diarra veterans. We are going to request all of them to please stand up and let God give them a very big, beautiful applause. Please, all the veterans, all the veterans come out! All the veterans, step outside! Thank you, thank you, thank you! Something happened in 1967. You were coming back from primary school, mother, son, tasking, and mine. Along the road, we saw a flyer. On it was a military man with his medicine. He was written on it, "This man is broken." Are you? Oh, Diarra, are we ready? Are we ready? On behalf of our leader, on behalf of our leaders, we are asking our almighty God, who has continued to retain your life, who has continued to keep you, you will all live to see the proclamation of this proclamation, my Jesus! My Jesus! Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Omenai, thank you. Can we have our seats? No. Yes. Omeni, thank you. Please, show your self for my brothers. Thank you. Thank you. Please. Our minister for defense is giving me his good instructions. Please, nobody should pass this line. Please, do not extend their movement. Yes. Okay, you're right. There is something so special about Diarra. I have never been in an event in Houston. And there is tranquility. It has never happened before. This is the only time in Houston, a message is said, "An event will start at 2:00, 3:00, and you see people before 1:30." Yes, my God, can you hear Jesus? Yes! This is a show. I remember Professor Enel Wale, one of the greatest scientists in the United States, who are there, Diarra. I have told my wife. My wife does not believe in what I believe. And I have told my son, "If I die tomorrow, don't cry. The lamb, the lamb so soon leave, Diarra flag be carried, no no da la, when they are eating." Every family have this problem. 90% of our women no longer believe from where we come from. That's why I'm going to vote for Trump. Yes. Those of them who say no, Trump will send them home. Those who believe in Diarra, you will all stay. Thank you! Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, there is a proverb in Igbo. Please, our brothers and sisters who come from other tribes, permit me to say this proverb. Opoto. Juna paketrowa, cities of Odomareya, isn't it? This is our supreme leader. Aguee Apuli, in time to foot it. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time to hand over this microphone to the another one of God. This is the time to hand over this microphone to the chief servant. Give a memory if you are praying. Please, always remember him in your prayers. Every night, we sleep with our wife and children. He has never slept with us, sleeping with Diarra. He has never worked off, without working off with Diarra. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not qualified to hand over this microphone to a supreme leader. I am going to hand over the microphone to our national president, who will distinguishedly and respectfully take it to our leader, so far to use it.
Before we get started, we have a new Diarra song. He's just gonna play it for a few minutes. We spend a lot of time and energy practicing this song, learning this song. Please, listen to the words of the song, not really debating. It makes a world of difference.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you! Thank you, Ohamadike. One family! There will, everybody, thank you, thank you. It is that time we call you four for the time of meaning. When our Ohamadike has honored, I will honor you to talk to you as to why you must have your nation. This song that you just enjoyed when you danced to it or you just listened to it, I can assure you that I know that you enjoyed it. Alright. That song is presented, was put together by our children here in Houston. You may know or you may not know, the reason the enemy is after us is because our creativity, our innovation, our city building, everything that is good. They fell and they continue to fall. IPOB! IPOB! One family! There will, Ohamadike, I would delay your talking to us because my ears are open, ready. I will listen. There will listen. We will listen. There will, Ohamadike. IPOB! 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 One family! I thank all of you for being here today. And if the enthusiasm, the punctuality. If the camaraderie and the brotherhood and the togethers I have seen in Houston can be welcomed at the last cross of America, I am sure that Diarra will come. We have come to preach the gospel of heaven. Those of you who are watching. And here in Houston, I must preach it. Our veterans are here. And it's a very good thing that you have danced to music. It's very good. Because I don't have good news for you. You know, it's one of those scenarios where somebody will ask you a question and say, "I have news for you. What is bad and what is good? Which one do you want first?" I think we have dispensed with the good news. We have made merry. Now, we are going to give you the truth and nothing but the truth. Some of us have been in a militant telephone. You live in very beautiful houses, a master knowledge. Some of you have tour pre-pas. You have jobs to go to. You have food to eat. There is 24 hours electricity, there is water. There is also healthcare for some of you who are working. But where we come from, there is nothing. The reason why there is nothing is because those who are not worthy to be in power are those who are in power. I told you, I told you, I told you repeatedly for the past six years, for those who can listen, that a day will come, the foreigners will march presently into our land to demand what doesn't belong to them. A day will come when you will pay to serve the zoo. A day will come when you will have nothing. Nobody will regard you as anything. A day will come when your life will be useless. A day will come when you wish. You have never heard of the name Nigeria before. That day is now. It has come. We are the oldest people in the world. Diarra friends are the oldest people on the face of this very planet by Bano. I'm a one in Dibo, in Dibo, the beginning. Because in Igbo lexicon, every name has a meaning. Every name has a meaning. Every name has a meaning. The meaning of Igbo for those who do not know is ancient. Those that started the process. Ndembu, the very first people. But it's rather very strange. As the scripture made us aware, today the first is now the last. Are we not the last?
We are.
But unlike some people, I have shown you that is why I do what I do. That is why we do what we do. Because we have honor and dignity. Somebody came to America and built it. America did not fall from heaven. Men built it with their hands. The funniest thing is that they needed Biafran labor to be able to complete the assignment. Because without Biafrans, there will be no America. Without Biafrans, the greatness of America will be diminished. Without Biafran, this country would have been nothing. We kept them free service for 200 years. Most of the African-Americans you see, you call them Akata. Some of them are your relatives. Some of them are from your family. If you have a child and that child is suffering from a disease you can't understand, it is because you married your own bloodline, which doesn't happen in our culture. Are you aware of that? You cannot even marry from your mother's village. You cannot marry from your grandmother's village. Are you aware of that? We came here, we lost our way. We became very selfish, we reversed everything that is good about us. We stopped caring. Those of you in America, you stopped caring. The founders of World Igbo Congress is here, some of them. What I say behind somebody's back is what I say in front of them. Had World Igbo Congress done what they were supposed to do, I wouldn't be here today. I wouldn't be here today. But I do hope under the leadership of Professor Jofe, that things will change, that they will live up to the expectation and rise up to this very challenge from our Ushafulani. Because two days ago, they came for our land. They were no longer content with killing us and raping our mothers in Abu Iban, in Enugu State and in Ebon. They are no longer content with beheading our fathers when we go to the farms. They are no longer content with raping our daughters as well and abducting them in the process. They have now come to take our land from us. And some of us are in America eating hamburger. Our race is about to become extinct. As I speak to you today, they have come inside Enugu, as they did in 1967. Because over the years, you refused to speak with one voice. You thought that fighting for leadership is the end-all and be-all of your relevance, wherever you are. Every association you had was divided into four, five, six, seven, eight. Our men decided to embrace gossip more than anything else. Whilst our mothers were struggling and fighting, our men were busy plotting how to divide every association that ever came up. They became merchants of gossip and wearthornness. And that is why we are in this mess. Because had we been together like a people, Fulani will not have the temerity to come to our land in front of our governors to demand that we give our land to them. I told you so. I told you so in Igbo language, it's Abra Muna Abwan. And I said when the time comes. Because that is how we say it in my village. We are no longer as intelligent as we used to be. We used to be a very intelligent race. The most gifted, the most talented, the most honorable, the most truthful, the most accomplished race in Africa. Today, we have been reduced to nothing. That ordinary Igbo meeting of Ohaneze cannot be convened. Simple Igbo meeting. We have been reduced to issuing press statements on the pages of European newspapers. But you had a television there before. I'm sure you know that. Do you know the name? It's called Minaj, in Igbo policy. Before Italians came, before AIT came. But it died because it was owned by an Igbo man. Other Igbo men refused to invest in that very business. Because of our wickedness and backwardness. The Igbo people that emerged after 1970 is counterfeit, myself included. Fake. They no longer see what is coming ahead. They no longer have hope anymore. We became scavengers. And that is the reason why our land is gone. That is why Fulani people can decide who becomes your governor. They tell you, no matter what you might do, we determine who governs. And they do as we tell them. How do you explain or pontify a governor in office? Fulani has men in our land killing us, in Anambra, in Anam. Oh, they are no longer saying anything. The funniest thing is that some of us don't realize the mess we are in. We don't know it. And I can assure you that impunity upon impunity is happening in our villages today. The reason why you don't hear about it is because the Europeans are in charge of the media. They won't publish it. Our enemies are plentiful. As I said earlier today, I will paraphrase it today. There is the zoo called Nigeria. By the way, anybody who says he's a Nigerian is an animal, I'm sure you know that. How many of you here are Nigerians? How many of you here are from the zoo? Some of us are not ashamed to answer the name that was concocted. Nigeria means the lowest of the low. The land of Nigas, those who are abandoned. That is the meaning of Niga area, Nigeria that you answer. You are not ashamed of yourself and you say you're Nigerian. Can anybody tell me the meaning of the word Nigeria that you're so proud of? The woman that gave you the name saw you as a baboon. Some of you wonder why Africa is always poor. Every year, poor. And the poverty in Africa is making it impossible for white people to respect black people in America. Don't you know that? The reason why Europeans are respected is because Europe is doing well. You respect Japanese in America because Japan is doing very well. Is that not true? And some of them come here visa-free on a visa waiver program. That is how you know you've arrived. The only country with that privilege in Africa is South Africa. And surprise, surprise, it was wrong by white people for so many years. I don't know if you are thinking at all. Now the question is this. What is your purpose on this very earth? Is it to be a slave and a servant? After that, your children take over from you? And after that, your children in perpetuity? As you think you are giving birth to your children that maybe go to Harvard or Yale, you are giving birth to future generation of slaves in America. The reason being that Africa is so horribly bad that nothing good comes out of it. The white man came from Europe. Came into our land and said, "You, you, 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 from today, your name is Nigeria." And nobody asked questions. Ask yourself this very question then. Do you think that as an African, you can go into Europe and say to maybe Hungary and Belgium and say, "You, you, 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 from today, your name is Europa"? Can you do that? That means you're not a world, you're a white man. It means you are inferior. Because there are things he can do to you that you cannot do to him. That makes you inferior. There is only one solution. That solution is Biafran. I said the solution is Biafran. The solution of global is Biafran. The solution to problems in Africa is Biafran. As the early days of the revolution in 1910. That's my job. I tell you something and you ignore it. Give it maybe one more name. You will see it. Everything I told, look into back. Only one is remaining, and that is Biafran. And I assure you that Biafran will come. That Biafran will come. You are the finest of the finest. I am very, very proud of who I am. I consider myself very lucky to have been born a Biafran. And that is why I'm very, very proud of Biafran. That is why I would die a Biafran. And that is why this Biafran flag will rise up. And that is why we'll get our independence and we'll be free. The same thing they did to Azikiwe they are today doing to all of us. Zeke was begging them to go to school, they said no. The same Ebelle, Azikiwe. That's the name of Jonathan, isn't it? That is the same where we come from. Good luck, Jonathan went to Asarok. As his name said, did. His concern was Fulani education, I'll imagine. And he reminds me of Obama. Because I know some of you here foolishly vote for Democratic Party. And say foolishly. Who can they slavery in America? Which party? Which party? Which party is the party of slave owners in America? Which party? I said to some, am I allowed to, am I gabbling in their politics here? Are you sure that Gola will not open up a probe against Biafran? I said to people that when you elect a Democrat as a president, the only thing they can do for you is to increase the amount they pay you of food stamps.
I know.
That the Republican Party religion was called tough love. You may not like it. But over time, it will help you. I prefer that person that tells me the truth to my face than the one that will be pretending. Supporting Al Madjid in the north. Obama destroyed Libya. It was Obama that chased away Jonathan and put him to her end before Africa. I think it was President Johnson that introduced the new deal in America, is that correct? A landmark social welfare program. What are you going to remember Obama part? And he was there for eight years. And some people are grumbling. And I asked them and I said, "That thing that Obama as a black man could not do for you for eight years, how do you want a white man come to do it for you in three years?" Am I making any sense here? I wish they can deport all of us. Only then will our senses come back. Some of you here are engineers, architects, doctors, medical practitioners, pharmacists, isn't it?
Nurses.
Don't you think it would be better if you're a pharmacist in your village? I like the way that Americans protect their country and how proud they are of it. Some people left from the seaport of Southampton in England aboard a ship called Mary Rose. They came here to found a new civilization under God. They succeeded in doing that and that today makes America the longest surviving hegemonic civilization since the history of humanity began. A few people. That boat could have sank in the Atlantic. They knew the dangers they were facing. But the hope that America held and the vision of the new nation was so compelling that every immediate danger faded into significance. The anxiety was set on the goal. I don't know what your goals are for our people back home. Because we are dying. And those you put at home to take care of your states, they are also Fulani slaves. They are also killing you. Some of you here, when I formed the BSS, I'm sure some of you here grumbled. Is that not true? But I said that the reason why I formed the BSS was to counter the coming of the Fulanis, because I know they are coming. I see things that they cannot see. I knew that the Fulanis will come. I was preparing three years ahead. Some of you conspired. They must have covered midnight here, at six o'clock back home. You know, any morning gossip is very potent. I told you the last story, told you the last story, told you the last story. That evil men govern us, or Anese, on their own decided to invite Fulani army to come and kill me, my family, and IPOB. And now that they have come into our land, the same people are saying that we are ready. And somebody asked them, "You are ready to defend our land against Fulani? Where are your children?" The same IPOB that was set up to defend our land that they betrayed are the ones they are relying upon to defend our land today. The reason why they are relying on IPOB is because they know we can do it. We have done it before, we continue to do it today, we shall continue to do it until Biafra comes. What I find very shocking is that people don't ask, "What are we going to do to stop these people?" When I seek for advice, what they tell me is to embrace prayer. Or to try the diplomatic process. And he says, "Your village, what other diplomacy can this demon understand if not an AK-47 for an AK-47?" I hope you are recording this proceedings. If those of you here today in this hall in Houston, where I believe WIC started. When they started WIC here, God was trying to send a message, they are not sure they saw it. WIC was set up here for this very day, for now. But I'm not sure that they quite understood the message. What Fulanis did is to say, "We went to kill Nambikano. We killed IPOB family members. And now Nambikano is abroad. We can march into Biafra, nobody can stop us." You don't know that? When I came out of prison, I was back home, did you hear about Fulani hate men? We drove them away. And because of the carrot of Igbo presidency in the year 2096. If you have been following the news, you will hear it. Those that own the zoo called Nigeria, Niyeti Yala, they said it today. You know that meeting in Enugu? They sent their secretary, not the big aga. The big aga was waiting. The Fulanis think that the secretary went to Enugu and told their foreman, "And we are prepared to offer you the presidency, but in return, give us your land." Their foreman said, "Our, you know, are a typical Igbo man, I'll consider it." You know what they do? That an Igbo man can never, ever be the president of the zoo. And to add to that, Nigga will turn up. You don't know the game they are playing with Britain. They have gotten everybody where they want them. Now, believe you me, if the Fulanis so places, they can decide to rule the zoo forever and ever. There is nothing anybody can do about it. I said there is nothing we can do about it. You go to tribunal in the court to say, "Oh, my mandate was stolen from me." And the lawyer you're running to, Nigerian Bar Association, is running from the government. Government wants to kill them. Are you following? You're coming from this door. Maybe FBI is pursuing you from here. And you're running maybe to our, where's the secretary, secretary man is here. Oh, wait, wait, and he's here, defending you. But before you could get to the middle here, you, secretary man, advise yourself. CIA is pursuing you, that is. Are you following? You said that it is injustice in the land. I want to go to the courts to find or seek, you might be going to seek the dress. Before you go to the court, the judges we are on the, Hannah Wilson, judges in a horse. The same thing proceeds, it's pursuing the judges. When the same thing is pursuing you and pursuing the chief judge. That led the Nigerian Bar Association to proclaim that Nigeria is a lawless society. And somebody will wake up tomorrow morning and say, "I am a Nigerian." Sometimes, I'm not trying to excuse racial abuse or attack. But I'm being very honest. If I read through the papers every day, you come from this hopeless British creation called Nigeria, where nothing works. People are fleeing, trekking through Sahara Desert and dying in the process. Drowning in the Mediterranean. Humiliated, sold into slavery in Tripoli. Abused as house slaves in Saudi Arabia. And you still wake up and say, "I am a proud Nigerian." I won't feel sorry for you. Because you are foolish. Beyond foolishness. I belong to that very group of Biafrans that came here as slaves somewhere in a place called Savannah in Georgia. And they said to the white man, "Instead of me to serve you as a slave, I will not die."
They sank themselves.
If we know what has befallen us as a people, as a race, there will be urgency on the part of everybody to make sure that Biafra is restored. Because I tell you today, the most educated people outside white Americans are Biafrans in America. The most successful in terms of their own business startups and enterprise are Biafrans here in America. We are all these things for a reason. Not so that you can become very selfish and cocoon yourself in your detached homes and well-manicured lawns and gardens. Jukoke Kekar Pema gave you that grace. That you may be able to use it to better not just yourself, but from the environment where you come from. And failure to do it, you know what the Bible, failure to do it. Failure to do it. And let me warn you, all of you here gathered, that's why I asked if this is being recorded. If you don't rise up from this very day, from this moment, to support IPOB, to confront the mess that our land has become in the hands of Fulani, Tangja Wade, Jihadis. God will not forgive you. Even the land of America will not forgive you. I know some of you may think I'm having fun. There are some people that think that they are leadership material. They want to lead. They join meetings because they are craving leadership. Not that they have anything to offer. If you want to lead, you come and lead and we'll follow you. But IPOB has a mind of his own. If I stop living up to expectation, there's some IPOB that I set up to reject me. Do you know that? And IPOB does not belong to me. Biafra does not belong to me. It doesn't belong to my family. It belongs to all of us. The reason why some of you lose sleep at night that they call him supreme leader. Is because some of your priorities are misplaced. The supreme leader they call me is a kainen. It's not an official title. Magadi Amama is not an official title. Are you hearing me? It is not official title. It's a nickname. It's like. I am here to serve you. Not to be supreme over anybody. Anybody that knows me will taste to find I'm a very humble person. All the anger that I have inside me is against the enemies of Biafra. No, sir, a god Biafra will hurt you. If I'm against Biafra, I'll destroy you. That's why I'm. Looking in my direction and said, "My lord and my savior." That also is a kainen. They say it because, listen. When they go online and see sponsored attacks against IPOB and myself, they develop this as a defense mechanism and as a weapon of attack against that particular person. That's why they do it. Not that anybody is coming to replace Yeshua. When I pray every day, I pray seven times a day and I said to Jukoke Kekar Pema, "I am only but flesh, one day I will die, but your world will live forever." And your world says that Biafra will come. And in my time, that Biafra will come. And that is my hope. I am explaining this here out of respect for Houston. Can you get to your foreman? I am not a supreme leader. I am a supreme servant. Are you listening to me? They say it because they want to spite those. The reason why we do what we do is not so that we can fly all over the world and address our people or that we can put our lives in danger in search of a greater glory. We do what we do because we have been mandated divinely to ensure that Biafra comes in our time. And if Biafra doesn't come, then there is no God in heaven. That's what I pray. Because your world is here and amen. Everything you say must come to pass. Though heaven and earth may pass away, but your world shall remain. Your world says that Biafra will come. Then therefore, Biafra must come. If Biafra doesn't come, you will all be destroyed. I said, "If you don't fight for Biafra to come, believe you me, out of anger, Chukwuekele Pema will obliterate our race." Some of you want to lead now is the time. You don't need permission from me, not from our national coordinator, not even from Monachi. Go and organize IPAB wherever you are. Do you know why it has to be IPAB? Because we never retreat nor surrender. IPAB will keep going until Biafra comes. Nobody can buy us. Nobody can intimidate us. Nobody can stop us from doing what we are doing. And by the way, we are the only people that the Fulanis are afraid of. Only IPAB can defend our land and only you can support IPAB. If you don't support IPAB, my own passport color is red. Just understand that if you don't fight for your land, you forfeit the right to get angry anytime you're insulted.
Yes, absolutely.
Do they insult Japanese people here?
No.
Do they insult Japanese people here? And apparently, Japan, ever? Or not Malaysia of yesterday, do they insult Malaysians here? China, come on. Come on. Do they insult Chinese? Do you know why? All these places are developed and civilized. But sadly, Africa is not developed. It doesn't matter your title in Houston. It doesn't matter where you work, how many PhDs you've accumulated, how many white friends you have, or maybe how many mixed-race children you have. You can never be white. You can never be. Until you do those things that white people do, nobody can respect you. We will remain beggars for life. Give us peace. Some of us here are not ashamed that your own children will use their two legs to walk through the desert, to go to Europe or to be auctioned off as slaves in North Africa. You are not ashamed of yourself. Enough already said, "I'm a big man, have arrived, I have got twenty degrees, I'm an engineer." Rubbish. You are nothing. But a glorified house, um, nothing. You decide what you choose to do from this day onwards. It is up to you. And of Akeba in Houston, more or less having fun and praising Elohim for IPAB. But our land is under occupation. The face of diplomacy has come through the window. How do we drive them out is the question. And the only people that can do this IPAB, why do you also? Why do you also before man and before God in heaven? Choose your petty envy and jealousy, can't get anywhere. You might argue because we can't. So you may pursue my village. And you want to rescue all of them. And you want a white man to respect you. Why do white people respect yourselves? Where in another man's land? Yes, we built it by force, not voluntary. That is why Biafra will come. All this government synchronized, as I was coming here, my wife was coming in.
I'm so happy to see you all today. A lot of people, you know, I knew you, so I didn't speak. No, I'm so happy and I hope that at some point I'll be able to say something. I'm happy to see everyone of us here and I thank God for good health and prosperity. We seem to enjoy a lot in America and you can see the evidence. So at some point, I'll be able to say something. Thank you.
Somebody saw my picture with Monachi. You know Monachi is a dog maker? And I guess I don't miss him. Except for that. You're all the same. What I want all of you to understand is this. That you are better off working with IPAB to restore Biafra. Because if you like, you join us. If you like, you don't. One thing is certain. Biafra will come. And when Biafra comes, you will not come to Biafra land. If you don't support IPAB, if you like, take a yellow plane to Rwanda and get temporary citizenship from Rwanda to come into Biafra land. We will not allow your plane to land. Because we are not foolish.
No, we are not.
You see, sometimes when people get angry in the Western world and they become racist towards black people, we don't actually capture the whole picture. All of us here have mobile phones, yes? Did mobile phone fall from heaven? Do you know that your mobile phone works with a satellite orbiting this very earth? Do you know how many people died to put one satellite in orbit? It's called sacrifice. All you do is you come, you consume, you consume, you consume. You don't contribute. That is why sometimes they upset. India has gone to space. So has China. Maybe even, I think Brazil has gone as well. There is no indigenous African country that's ever come to space. I said, "None." And you want to participate, you want to participate in enjoying what comes out of this without understanding the sacrifice that goes with it. Some people are sitting down laughing at IPAB. We are dying. They are killing us. You can never ask yourself, "How can I help?" All that you're concerned about is not a clear. He's a small boy. Yes? He did fight the war. At what age did Obama go to become their president here? Oh, forty-six? Forty-two? Last year in his forties, yes? No, he's a small boy. According to our culture, he's a small boy. That is how selfish some of our elders, as they say, all of our elders, some of them are. Because when the Westman left, most of them were in their early twenties. Late twenties, early thirties. Then we are given the responsibility to pilot their face of the nation. But in our time, in our hometown, they say we are small. And I said to them, "For the past fifty years, with all due respect in the world, what have you achieved for us?" I'm not trying to insult anybody because if you've achieved something, Fulani cannot come to our land. I said, "They want to take it." It is an indictment of the same type of association politics we have been playing for fifty-two days. If I ask some people here, they will say we have our own group. Our group is called this Otungia. This is gathering, that association. But all of us put together in other sessions, we are worth nothing. Because if we are worth something, there is no way Fulani can come to any group and say to us, "We want your land." Are you following? You know, we don't take criticisms very well. Me, I take it that some people can't. What do we expect you to do? Is there any reason why all of you here gathered today will not come to Washington next year for a march? To let the world know what is happening to us? Any reason? Any reason? We will march next year on the third of July. Why are we going to march on the third of July? Because when you are in the country of a white man, for you to get anything, you must demonstrate on the street. If you don't, nobody will listen to you. That is a fact of life. Before women got the vote in America, the suffragette movement, they went to Washington, they demonstrated. Before Martin Luther King, may God rest his soul. May God rest his soul. May God rest his soul. Before he sacrificed his life for all of you. He marched in Washington. Then you may have all those fancy jobs you have today without giving out all the jobs you have now, none of you. It's called sacrifice. You must follow people, what they have done before. You can't sit in your house and write Trump about Biafra and Trump will respond. Isn't it possible? What cloud do you command? If we go to Washington next year, when they look through their windows on Capitol Hill and they see one million Biafra's marching, you don't need to write to them, they will write to you. That is the paradox of the skyscraper. Do you know it? You know, after colonialism, after independence, most of the so-called nationalist leaders, in the case of the zoo, according to the trip line mice, they said they studied abroad. They saw Chrysler Tower, you know those fancy tall buildings? They went to Marina, Lagos and built their own. Do you know those tall buildings? Grandmother and I lived in Iraq. They're the skyscraper. Because there's skyscraper in New York, so we have to build one here as well. And after four years, no running water anymore. You live on the fifty-eighth floor. You can never get to Gomera well and carry it up the stairs because of course lift is not working anymore. They live in a skyscraper in Africa. Do you know why I call it the paradox of the skyscraper? Because when we come to this part of the world, all we see is the fancy stuff. Do you know that? The glittering fancy stuff, that's what we see. We never ask ourselves the discipline that would propel that very productive process. Discipline. Biafra cannot be free until you fight for it. You must fight for it. Anybody telling you that I'm not here to like independence is a bloody lie. You must tell the world you exist. You must tell your politicians here in America not to take the vote of Biafra friends for granted. You must show them how many you are. You must let them know that you are here. That you hold the key to determine who goes into the White House in 2020. You can determine it. And once they know you have that power, anything you want, they give it to you. That is how politics works. Not politics of the zoo. You carry money all over the place. Here is different. I expect you to be teaching me this. Therefore, those of you who are Nigerians, those who decide to remain a part and parcel of the zoo, you have seen where it has gotten us today. Have you seen it? And when they met with me, they know that our land is under occupation. Do you know that fully headsmen have come? Do you know that? Do you know that? Some of you don't know. And anybody who doesn't know, may Trump deport them or their children back. Our land is under occupation, if you don't, let me tell you. The reason why you're a Nigerian is because of the oil and gas, if you don't know, let me also tell you. There's some oil and gas, you don't enjoy it. Those that convince the jaws and so-called South South to fight evil brothers and sisters. How far today? Are you enjoying that oil? Do you see how foolish we are? If this evil man wants me because of the oil, are you enjoying the oil? One billion dollars missing. One billion stolen by a full-on man. Listen, I said one billion dollars. And idiots came out openly to tell the whole world that he doesn't know where the money is.
Who will challenge them? No man in the line.
Oh, listen to me too. Listen carefully. Do you know there's a difference between billion and million? Do you know? Billion starts with B. Million starts with N. Is that correct? Billion, we don't pick it like a calculator, also, or zero, or, no more space. If you like, you try it. Only Sametu was given, listen carefully, four hundred million naira. Which highest is, um, one point four million dollars. In fact, I think it's one million dollars anyway. And he's been dragged through the court every blessed day. Every blessed day. Morning they gave him for campaign, but the full-on man sat down and swallowed one billion dollars. but the Fulani man sat down and swallowed one billion dollars. Now, do you see how many years all those associations?
Yes, useless.
Oh, because of your strong. Such nonsense would happen. Now, the reason why I keep pointing out the impotency of our associations, proliferation. Everywhere you go, there's a new group. Everywhere you go, all amounts to zero.
Zero, nothing.
Only me yet, and now one organization, one, from Fulani, only one. And they have taken us over. All in the Ibuana has a, uh, uh, I want to form my own room. My, my, my own faction. Do you see how Fulani people succeeded in achieving their two-hundred-year-old agenda of conquering everybody? For two-hundred years, the plan that is conducted is. And I told you in Los Angeles that they're in a hurry. Before I flew from LA to Houston, they have come into our land, they're asking us because they know that your petty envy and jealousy of IPOB, of Fandam, the cannon, will prevent you from supporting IPOB. Capable of defiling our land. So Fulani people are counting on your wickedness.
Yes, they are.
That's what they're relying upon. You people are the reason why Fulanis in our land. You are the reason all those useless associations and are from everywhere came down to ruin. If you don't rise up, our land will be gone. If you don't rise up, our land will be gone. And if the men cannot do it, I'm sure that our mothers can. If our men cannot do it, our mothers will. They forced people to rise up against European rule in Africa. They forced people, the rule of Africa. Therefore, women. And maybe the time has come for them again to take the lead last time. I don't remove myself when I say things. What I tell is for own good. That we may change and become better Biafra's. Become better Igbo people, better ajos, better EPO, better Aran, better Idoma, better in Ghana. Can anybody tell me here the title of the traditional law of the Ghana? Do you believe that a Ghana people and Igbo people are related? Do you believe it? Have you heard of the title before, the Anta of Obosi? You have Anta in your village? His brother. They are from a Ghana. You know the man they call Iweka? You know Iweka, the name drop, Iweka after him? Do you know he's a Ghana man? From Obosi? Is that correct? He born when the Naga Abubon. And he have, um, been born and raised in the village. Abubon Abubon. A Ghana and Igbo are one. When we say that a Ghana is part of Biafra, we know what we are talking about. When we say that the Idoma is part of Biafra, we know what we are talking about. When we say that the jaw is part of Biafra, we know what we are saying. When we say that the so-called is Biafra, we know what we are talking about. Is there anybody who is dressed like a proper Biafra woman here? Two piece wrap, anybody here? Unproper boy?